Ah, here's Kathy Noel.
No, that gives us. Quorum. So we have two quorums. Is that quora?
Let's say yes.
Alright.
Recording in progress.
Right. Are you letting them in?
Yeah.
Um, Jackie's having trouble getting Zoom in to work.
I'm gonna go ahead and welcome folks and hopefully we can get everyone added. Alright, welcome to the special meeting of the Scioto Township Planning Commission and the Scioto Township Board of Trustees. Uh, we're using a um, a hybrid meeting platform with Zoom. And for members of the public who've joined us by video or phone, your microphones are muted, but will be open when appropriate. In order to minimize disruptions to the meeting and connectivity problems, only members of the, of the board or the commission will have video. Applicants and staff have video access, but have been asked to turn off their cameras until called upon. And then at that time, they may use the shared screen capacities if appropriate. The meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. All members of the public body and members of the public participating electronically will be considered present at the meeting and may participate as physically present. And as uh, people um, withdraw call, if members of the body are participating from elsewhere, they need to identify their county, municipality, and state. Uh, there will be an opportunity for the public to speak during our public hearing. And instructions for a public comment will be provided at that time. So if um, the Board of Trustees wants to go ahead and call their meeting to order.
Oh, I thought one calling to order was adequate.
Okay, or, or do your roll call, whichever you wanna.
Why don't you do your roll call first and then we'll, we'll.
Okay, well do our roll call. Secretary Chang, will you uh, do our roll call please?
Uh, yes. Commissioner Holland.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Sharma. Commissioner Corteau. Commissioner Hyde.
Present, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Commissioner Chang, present, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan, and Commissioner Culbertson.
Present.
Okay, we have quorum.
Thank you.
Sir Flintoff, please call the role for the Board of Trustees.
Sure. Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer. Flintoff, present. Corteau. Jerome.
Present, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Noel.
Present, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel. We have quorum. Alright.
No, Jackie's trying to get in, but she's having some difficulty.
Okay, then um, the next um, item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And I guess we can go with the Planning Commission first. Are there any additions or changes to the special um, joint meeting agenda? Seeing none.
I move adoption of the agenda for the joint meeting.
Um, moved by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Holland. Any comment, further comment? Roll call vote please.
Okay, Holland.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yes.
Chang, yes. Culbertson.
Yes.
Okay, it's adopted.
Do we need to have a similar motion to adopt the agenda now?
No.
Okay, alright.
Okay, then we'll move along to uh, communications and correspondence. Um, we did receive uh, two emails uh, regarding the master plan today. One from Pam Boyd, um, actually there were two from Pam Boyd, and one from Beth Wallace. Uh, were there any other communications anyone would like to report? Anything from the BOT?
There was a message from, uh, that I relayed um, to, I think, Carla Wardman from the um, Chair of the DDA regarding language, sort of updating language having to do with the DDA. A reference to the DDA's master plan. Did you get that?
I, I, I'm, I'll be sitting up there.
Yeah. But, or maybe you can cut, you can, yeah, you could probably sit next to Will, maybe. Or up here, either way.
Um, we, I got several emails at the end of the day. I've not been able to chance to really dig into them. But yeah, we'll, we can use those as part of the public comment.
Okay. Then uh, we'll move on. Uh, we have a presentation uh, by OHM uh, on the sewer capacity study. And I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for uh, letting us do this virtually. It's very helpful. Um, good evening, everybody. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I love, you guys, you have the best system. That's great. Best hybrid system I've seen so far. So um, in the audience or in online, I have Lucas Fitzpatrick, um, who I see his name logged in. He'll be helping me do the presentation, so if you guys can give him uh, permissions to share screen and um, turn on his video, that'd be great. Sally and Stacy, whom the PC is very familiar with, uh, is also in the audience. They're not gonna present tonight, but just, uh, they're here for uh, moral, moral support and to be frank, their own interest in all of this. So um, while Lucas is sharing the screen, um, real quick, uh, I'll, I'll do a quick intro and just kind of give a little bit of background on why we did that, when we were authorized to do this. And Lucas will take you through the meat and potatoes. We'll try to be brief to leave some Q and A at the end, so um, essentially sewer capacity is always, since I've been working in Scioto, which is since 2005 and OHM got involved in 1999, has always been pretty important. Um, this study was authorized over a year ago, um, in which we um, placed meters in the ground as a follow-up to previous INI studies, uh, inflow and infiltration studies and different um, sewer capacity studies. Basically, we wanted to accomplish a couple of things, um, really um, understand where, where the flows are at based on the development that we've seen. And also how well does the um, sanitary sewer pipe manhole rehab and pipe rehab that we've done over the past years, how's that holding up? Um, previous to the current utility director, uh, Scott Martin had seen some um, spikes in inflow and infiltration and just different anomalies. So really, we wanted to kind of look at, where was that coming from? Um, was it expected? Was it due to new development? Was it just something that failed in the system? And um, we wanted to pinpoint that. On top of that, we also wanted to just look at how we're doing with contract capacity and how are we doing with respect to the physical capabilities of the pump station? So again, I'll, I'll advance through these slides, or actually Lucas will. Um, I already introduced Lucas.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Matt. I'm having a bit of an issue. Um, Lucas was sharing his screen and, and it was working and now it's not visible here.
Oh, okay. I can see it.
I can see it.
Yeah, it shows I'm still sharing it.
Is it on the other screen?
I can see it.
Yes, so it may be just a problem for us in the room.
Um, let me uh, let me end the presentation format. Can you see the draft format now? Like the uh, slide selection window?
No, can, are you sharing your, you're sharing your screen, right?
Yeah, I will uh, I'll just reshare it. And then maybe I won't go all the way into the presentation format. I'll stay in uh.
You know, Lucas, that might be it, to just keep it at your, the screen level, if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can, can you see it now?
No.
Oh, oh, there, okay. Okay, now I gotta start all the way over, all over again, from the beginning. Alright, so um, I'm gonna hand it over to Lucas here in a minute, but really quick, here's some good news. Um, the good news is, is um, you know, we, we, we marked, we metered back in 2008, we metered even before that. Um, we set up the meters in approximately the same location, if not the exact location. Really, we saw lower flows than 2008. Um, and that's probably due to a couple of things. Um, one was, uh, we did a tremendous amount of rehab. Um, I think Kathy was on the board when we were doing a lot of it. Um, some other people on the PC might remember, but we went through and lined a lot of pipe. We, we fixed a lot of manholes. We raised a lot of manholes up out of the flood areas. And so those, those efforts have um, you know, reduced the flows that you're sending to Ann Arbor. And we've been able to maintain those flows down lower than what they were in 2008, even with all the development that has occurred along Jackson Road corridor. Um, good news is we have adequate sewer capacity. Um, and today, we have adequate pump station capacity. Um, and that's asterisk, and we'll get into a little bit why. Um, and then the contract capacity is inadequate though, for the projected 20-year growth. And that 20-year growth can kind of tell you how we estimate that, but that's based on SNCOG population growth uh, increases. What we know is online from planning, just looking out, what, what do we expect? But right now, here today, as we sit, um, things, things are, things are okay. So that's good news. Real quick background, next slide, Lucas. There's a bit of a lag, so just bear with me. Okay. It, it's moving. I'm still seeing the executive summary. Okay. Everybody see that now? So a little bit of background, um, metering study on a, on a 10-year frequency. Um, you can see a little, little chart there. Um, and as I said, going back to, to the early, early 2000s, you know, Scioto knew they had some, I, I, I keep saying, if I say the word INI, inflow and infiltration, basically what that means is stormwater, rain runoff that gets into the sanitary sewer system, either through groundwater, getting in through the pipes, or actual overland flow. Um, and as we saw different spikes, we were able to pinpoint kind of problem areas and spent uh, spent sewer capital dollars in eliminating that. Um, so overall, we wanted to basically go back and re-meter from the last time. After we got done with all the capital improvements, we made out a baseline. And we went back to kind of see, how are we doing? Since it's been five, six, seven years since we've really done any major manhole and sewer lining, is the system holding up? And, and if not, where are we seeing some, some failures? Or where are we seeing some, some of that water infiltration get in? Um, and also, on top of that, it gives us a better baseline of, from all the new development that's gone in. Since then, where, where do we stand? Um, it helps guide kind of our thought process on where we're, when we're reviewing things that come in through the Planning Commission. Um, and, and how much sewer flow they, it's kind of make, letting us, allow us to understand, do we have capacity? Can we allow this much flow into the system? And then uh, the board has, has approved over the years, and the Planning Commission is used to seeing it. First page of our, of our OHM's review letters, and Carla Wardman always references it in theirs. Um, as far as is there capacity, how many REUs? We use that term all the time, and, and we'll define that in a little bit, but those are equivalent, you know, this, how many REUs is the site using? And does this site have REUs associated with it? Or do we need to approve them for additional above and beyond? Um, and then um, basically overall, just giving a, a, an overall sense of, of kind of where, a snapshot of where we are today and where we project we'll be in, in, in 10, in 20 years. Click to the next one. So all those questions were coming to us at OHM, and we put together a proposal. A purpose, again, evaluate the flows' capacities, understand the capacity and available, bets available for future growth, compare flows to the contract limits that you, that township has with Ann Arbor. Then help develop design flows and understand, what does that mean? What do we have to do for any capital upgrades, including Jackson Road Pump Station, which virtually almost all of the sewage in uh, in, in the, in Scioto goes through the Jackson Road, with the exception of the Liberty, this uh, stuff from the uplands area, comes down to the Liberty Road Station. So we put together a proposal, the township approved us to install new meters and rain gauge, uh, meter uh, collections within the system. Again, I already mentioned that we put those in the same spot. Um, gather that data and analyze it to gather a technical memorandum. And Lucas, remind me, is this where you were gonna take over, or do I keep? Yeah. Okay. No, you, you can, you can hand it over now. I, I got it. Okay. Thanks for the intro, Matt. Um, so the, the data collection part of this was uh, was task number one. Um, and to collect the sewer data flow, uh, we deployed nine temporary meter, or temporary flow meters from April to October in 2020. Um, technically, there was eight flow meters, but we, we moved one to a ninth location just to improve data reliability at one of the locations. Um, so when we, when we deployed these meters, we targeted the same manholes that were used in 2008, uh, so that we could compare the flows over time from 2008 to now. We then took the flows and uh, analyzed what, you know, what they looked like in general. Um, we had historic meter data from the Jackson Road Pump Station available, um, almost for, you know, the last 20 years. So when we compare 2020, you know, our, our metered flows to the, to the past flows at the Jackson Road Pump Station, we see that they're relatively low, but not unusually low. Um, you can see that, you know, there's, there's varying periods of uh, flux in, in how much flow we see at the Jackson Road Pump Station. And a lot can influence this. This can be a lot, you know, based on like weather patterns and the amount of groundwater and how saturated the ground is, and how much INI you get, along with your capital improvement projects, which eliminate INI. So it's a, it's kind of a balancing act where, you know, over time, the infrastructure degrades, you improve it. We get wet weather, dry weather, some years are wetter than others, and we end up with uh, with more flow. Getting into more detail, when we really dial in on the, the INI, that inflow and infiltration, um, what we're really looking for is uh, the peaking factor, which is just the ratio of the peak flow compared to the average flow. A high peaking factor suggests that there may be problems with infiltration and inflow in that area. So we're, we're getting some sort of, you know, illicit flow that we're not expecting from typical sanitary waste. We found the highest peaking factor in the district metered at uh, sanitary manhole 1688, which is the area south of Jackson Road and east of South Z Road. Um, when Matt and I were discussing this, he mentioned that there is a creek in this area that may be uh, contributing to that, um, that flow. Relative to the rest of the, the service area, this is a pretty low-flow district, so it's not like it's really doing a whole lot to the system overall. Um, but you know, your, your average flow, flows are really low, but your peak hour compared to the average flows is pretty high. So as far as identifying future areas of like INI um, reduction efforts, this, this area may warrant further investigation in the future. Yeah, and not to um, mess with your flow, Lucas, but that area is also, I looked back, and that is an area that's pretty difficult to get to and limited line was done previously, compared to some of the other areas where we spent quite a bit of money. And you know, in the uplands area, we did extensive lining. And some of the other areas down um, just north of Liberty Road, we did a lot of lining. This area did not get a tremendous amount of love, because when we did the original metering back, back then, um, this area wasn't necessarily that problematic. So that, it, it does make sense and isn't, isn't overly shocking. Well, and like I said, it, it's a relatively low-flow district, so it's not like, you know, even if there is infiltration and inflow there, it's not necessarily having a, a dramatic impact on the system overall. Um, so moving, moving on from there, once we get that preliminary data analysis done, we can move into a hydrologic analysis, which really dials in um, the predictive ability of our, of our hydrologic model, which is basically just looking at how rain translates into flow. It's a way of modeling, you know, the impact of that INI on the overall sanitary flow. Um, we discussed the data collection already. The, really what we're doing with the hydrologic analysis is, is just making a model that is uh, predictive of observed conditions. So we, we are just comparing the model flows to the observed flows and then tweaking the model parameters so that our model flows are within a standard tolerance of observed flows. And then from there, we can take historic weather patterns and project that out into the future to generate design flows. So the, the output from that hydrologic analysis is uh, is a model peak flow. We can then take that and, and add in a projected future growth flow from the, the REUs and anything else that, that we're expecting, you know, any growth that we're expecting. Um, that gives us design flow, and we can use that to inform, uh, design like the Jackson Road Pump Station uh, options. Um, we can also take those design flows and look at the uh, the conveyance capacity of the sewer. And you know, i- in other, other utilities, we may look at the treatment capacity as well, but Scioto, you know, discharges to Ann Arbor, so. Um, so for us, it's, it's pretty much just about the conveyance capacity. Um, which we evaluate using a hydraulic analysis, a hydraulic model. And the hydraulic, hydro, so hydrologic is just how the rain turns and flows, and hydraulic is just how the flows move through the pipes. So our hydraulic modeling shows that we don't really expect any issues with uh, with the sewer capacity for the design flows uh, that we expect. Um, no, no issues here. So the next uh, next step there is the pump station analysis. Um, and for the pump station analysis, uh, we reviewed the capacity at the Liberty Road Pump Station and the Jackson Road Pump Station. Um, we found both stations to be sized adequately for the existing flows, but the future design flow at the Jackson Road Pump Station exceeds its current capacity. Improvements at the station are currently being evaluated as part of another project. And it, these, you, you know, this, this will help inform uh, a- any improvements to that station in the future. Uh, but like, like we said, flows are fine for right now. You have capacity in the pump stations, but eh, for the future growth, especially the 20-year growth, um, you may need to, to improve or increase the capacity at Jackson Road. Lastly, we looked at the contract capacity with Ann Arbor. Um, this is all in terms of REUs, the residential equivalency units, which is approximately equal to uh, or I'm sorry, the contract is in billion, million gallon, million gallons per day, uh, which we converted into residential equivalency units for ease of, of using with planning. Um, it was communicated to us that um, the Jackson Road District, we expect 1,800 REUs of growth uh, in the next five years. And we projected out using a variety of sources, as Matt mentioned, you know, SNCOG and the, the recent water master plan that was developed, um, to project almost 4,000 REUs over the 20-year span. Um, currently, there are 2,200 REUs available, so we're, we're looking okay for the five-year, but the 20-year, not so much at Jackson Road uh, for the contract with Ann Arbor. Liberty Road uh, has uh, 1,100 REUs available. Um, the district is mostly built out. We don't really expect to uh, you know, to need to expand capacity there. So um, to wrap things up, we, we have lower flows, or we, we metered lower flows in 2008, or 2020 than we did in 2008. But when we look at the, the flows overall for the last almost 20 years, in 2020 was relatively low, but not unusually low. We found that there's adequate sewer capacity for the uh, existing five-year and 20-year growth. And then we also found that there's adequate pump station capacity today through potentially the five-year growth, but not necessarily 20-year with the Jackson Road Pump Station. And then contract capacity is inadequate for the projected 20-year growth at the Jackson Road District as well. Uh, we can open it up for questions now. That's really all I've got. If you want to go back one slide, I think, I think, knowing my audience, they might be interested in the numbers, but a couple of things that stand out to me here is, and something that we can talk to both Eagle and Ann Arbor with is, if Liberty Road Station has an additional 1,100 REUs, contract-wise, you know, if, if you look at this, the, the second bullet point here, five-year growth, we have about 2,200 plus or minus REUs remaining. Um, we project with five-year growth, and that includes kind of knowing what's coming down the pipeline and, and, and projected. We're, we're good for the next five years, on top, contractually. On top of that, we might be able to move and work with Ann Arbor on some of the um, moving some of the available capacity at Liberty over, which would give us, you know, buy us some time from a contract standpoint. Um, the big thing that we're kind of finding, and, and we kind of understood and realized is, and, and Lucas alluded to it, we, we did a secondary uh, study, and we're, it's underway, and actually, most of it's done. Um, but in June 2021, um, we published a, a report, gave it to the Utilities Department, and basically outlined some pump upgrades at Jackson Road. Um, that would help with some of the, the capacity issues physically. Um, and again, there, um, I, I think, again, we're good now to worry about that, like tomorrow or, or even in the next year or two. But looking towards that five-year growth period, we're gonna start to run into physical capacity at the Jackson Road Pump Station as well. So um, with that, it, it just, there's, there's work to be done, but understanding that and being able, and, and we're gonna wrap up that study for Jackson Road. The only reason we have not yet is, um, there's an air relief valve that needs to be constructed yet uh, this fall or winter. Probably, most likely will be completed in the spring. And part of that is, when that's under construction, we're gonna televise and look at the condition of the existing force main under Jackson Road, um, so we can evaluate the condition of that and add to the report, so. Um, so I just wanted to throw that on top of all the information that you're receiving uh, tonight. But the bottom line is, in, in the next zero to five years, you're, you're good. Beyond five years, depending on the rate of site plans that are coming in and the demands on the Jackson Road District, there's gonna be needing to be some capital upgrades. Um, and then eventually some contract uh, talks with the Ann Arbor.
Okay, thank you, Matt. I think what we'll do is we'll start with questions of people that are present, and then we'll move to those that are online. Um, just, and Jessica, at some point, if you could put the folks up on, I think you can put, I wonder why that goes on both screens now? Cause it used to, you could just do it on, on one screen.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Ah. That's interesting, cause yeah, cause we could, you can put the.
I used, I did that too. I switched them like that.
Yeah.
She's doing the moving now. I don't think, but.
I don't, but we can't see both at once. But anyway, uh, questions um, from either Planning Commission members or trustees that are present in the room. Jake.
Uh, hi, Matt. Uh, how do the current flows uh, compare to the REUs that are in use? In other words, is the, what's the relationship between those?
So, it's a great question. Um, so obviously, every time we meter, we reset that needle. Um, you know, we, we track REUs, um, and we approve REUs, but we basically only, the board only approves REUs for what is over the original, I think it's 1986 Special Assessment District that was set up. So we basically, when the board approves REUs, they're approving above and beyond what was, what was uh, originally allocated to each parcel. So, but the, the good news is every time we metered and we, we do a project, we will probably work with Eagle, and we kind of hit the reset button. So to be honest, when Lucas showed me the results of this, this report, and I see that we have.
and I see that we have 2,200 REUs approximately left right now as we stand today, when Sally and I track, we kind of check off the REUs. And I thought we were down around closer to 1,500. So the fact that our INI is down, you know, flows are down and a lot of that is attributable to every time somebody changes a fixture or a toilet in their house or a restaurant gets remodeled, low flow, lower flow fixtures are being put in. It could be a less intensive use set up pretty, you know, a restaurant that, you know, isn't on operation and gets switched into more of a business or something like that. So so I guess, Jay, I hope I'm answering your question, but I think we kind of mentally track kind of where we're at as we start to approve site plans. But then every time we go out and meter, we're able to kind of reset that bar. And thankfully, our REUs, each REU in in SIO, just so you know, is 300 gallons per day. That's REU is equivalent to what a basic single-family residential home is. The the fact of the matter is, most single-family homes these days use less than 300 gallons a day. So we're a little conservative in our calculations, but we use 300 because that's what Ann Arbor uses. So it puts us in an apples-to-apples kind of conversation. So I'd say we're going to continue to track the way we are because I'd rather have a conservative approach and think we're a little less, have a little bit less capacity or wiggle room, we really do. And again, we we recommend, you know, every so often, maybe, maybe, maybe every 10 years is too much, but maybe every five to seven years, you're you're constantly checking and remetering.
So it's 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 interesting to me that it's bulk flow, it's the total number of gallons and not based on the REUs. And I wasn't really, I wasn't sure how that was calculated. But I see that we have a five-year and a 20-year. In between is important too. I mean, what are we looking at in 10 years? And, you know, it's, you know, when is May Day? And the other question I have is that the relation of the SIO, is SIO view in the Liberty flow or the Jackson flow? And are those two different flows as far as capacities? Either physical capacity or REU capacity or whatever? I don't, I'm, I wasn't sure there was a relationship between. Is there a relationship between the Liberty and the Jackson?
So contractually, yes, physically, no. So Ann Arbor, the way the contract's written, I believe, is Liberty was given a certain amount of flow max and and Jackson was given a certain amount of flow. I remember when the contract got rewritten, when it was last negotiated, I remember the original contract had lockalpine flows and walnut ridge flows and and different flows. And they were pretty amenable to moving flows from one one district to another. And for whatever, you know, Liberty really, other than since the original metering was done back in 2008, nothing was really added to Liberty, other than Kensington Woods, I believe. So very little flow is added. And really, there's not a whole lot of room, other than, you know, if the Cadillac plant were to get redeveloped or or something along those lines, there's really not a lot of opportunity to increase flows. Now, that area, because of where the sewer runs, is more a little bit more susceptible to INI because there's some low-lying wetlands that the sewer runs underneath. But those were totally rehabilitated, lined and and brought up to snuff back in, you know, 2009, seven, eight, nine, I believe.
So does SIO view flow to Liberty or to Jackson?
Jackson.
And just it's since it's located on Liberty, I'm a little confused now.
It all gets, it all flows to the north. There's a pump station that'll take it up and under that creek that runs through the middle of SIO view and then it runs out Jackson Plaza. So there's a map, I don't know if we break down Parkland. Yeah, yeah, go to the hydraulic analysis slide, Lucas. The SIO view based on, yeah, it's hard to make out on this map. This is the greatest map to show you, but that SIO view all runs up to Jackson. Then down to, uh, once it gets out to Jackson to the east and to Zeeb and then Force Main all the way down. And I don't know how much of the the audience and everybody knows, but Zeeb Road is based, the pump station is located right next to Weingartz and the bank at the at the northeast corner of Zeeb and Jackson. From there, it's pump station, Force Main goes all the way down and discharges to a manhole across the street from Knights in Ann Arbor, if you're familiar with where that is. So that's a long, long Force Main. That is only Force Main that takes sewage from the Jackson Road District.
So how about 10, how about the 10-year thing?
So the 10-year, to answer, it's an interpolation. So it really depends on the pace and obviously economic development and the pace of development. Some years we get, you know, dozens of site plans and then some years it's slower than the other. So the answer is yeah, somewhere in the middle there. We could take a SEMCOG projection and it's basically going to be an interpolation between the five and the 20. So whether that happens on years, 7.8 or year 10.1, it really depends on the approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I apologize that I may be asking some stupid questions, but how much capacity in terms of these LEUs do we contract with right now with Ann Arbor?
So the contract is shown in Table 7 and I'm sorry if I switch back and forth between REUs and the MGD, but basically the way that the flows are written out and and we we switch to REUs because we knew planning commission was going to be here and that's what we talk about constantly. But when we're talking in flows of terms of million gallons, the available flow that we have is for the Jackson Road District is 1.3 million gallons per day. Right now, there's an existing flow of 0.63 and there's a remaining flow of 0.67. Is that, that's correct, right, Lucas? That's what I'm reading?
Yeah, yeah, we're we're using about half right now.
So I'm so we we have 100, 1.5 million per day in our contract and we're currently at 6.3, did you say?
Correct.
And that's, but that's just for
6.3 million?
0.63 million gallons.
Yes, 630, 600, 630,000 gallons per day.
0.63, okay.
Average flow, that's that's just, yeah, that's average daily flow, 630,000 gallons per day. And and you're you're
And then what is that for Liberty?
That's the intermediate district.
The FSWR.
40,000 gallons per day.
Now, what is the contract amount for Liberty?
Oh, 570,000 gallons per day. So you're you're a little less than half. Right, right.
How much is it again?
570,000 gallons per day.
What's the current use?
240,000 gallons per day.
So contract wise, you guys are okay. And honestly, there there's probably some opportunity to shift some of that. It's really just because the pump stations are are designed for peak flow. That's where it 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 gets a little bit tricky. Oh, peak flow is a little bit, your contract is all based on average flow, which is good.
Oh, okay. Any other questions?
Well, sorry, go ahead.
You go ahead.
I, thank you so much. Your studies are always really helpful and I always learn a couple of things and then have about five questions afterwards. First of all, I hope you coordinate with Steve Wogowski, our Utilities Director. I know he's been out on vacation, but normally he should be here for a presentation like this. I know he's been looking at how to handle maintenance of the system and looking at it a little differently than the way our previous director did. And so I'd be curious about how this study can inform where he's going to get the best bang for his buck with maintenance. Because you've outlined, mentioned a number of times, Matt, how we've been able to improve our efficiency through the maintenance program, so I want to make sure that we keep that up. Secondly, how does the Gelman contingency fit into this?
Excellent, excellent question. And honestly, we talk about Gelman and I have to switch back and forth between sewer and water. You know, when we, when we look at our, when we did the water, drinking water liabilities, we're talking about clean water now. Obviously, that's going to be a huge impact. And when we look at our SEMCOG, you know, projected growth, you know, SIO does such a good job of preserving lands outside of what they call the sewer district. On water, you've done the same thing, but with Gelman, it's a whole nother kind of issue, right? If if people's drinking water wells are subject to contamination or whatever, then we got to expand public water and water to them. Doesn't necessarily mean you need to expand public sewer to them. So the water growth plans and looking at what water can do on the drinking water side, we got to be be conscious about. And so we'll be talking about that as we actually have a I'll be, I think, in front of the board tomorrow night for a water modeling exercise. We just completed the water reliability check that's required by Eagle. But because of the water contract with Ann Arbor has been pushing the upper limits, they've looked for, and exactly what you're talking about, Clark, is about how how can we operate differently? How can we look at operating the system more efficiently? And we've been talking to Steve a lot about that. And this this, so we have to do on the drinking water side will allow us to utilize power a little bit different. It might look at alternative capital improvements to stay away from those contract limits. But Gelman, it's definitely a factor in that. I don't, this study does not include incorporating in the areas north of 94 and putting them all on public sewer at all. Actually, this study, I should even further elaborate. This study doesn't include expanding the sewer district beyond what the current sewer district is today. It only includes infill development and redevelopment within the existing Jackson Road Sewer District. So important for the planning commission and board as well.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so Matt or or team, I'm, I'm curious sort of what, how the redundancy issue sort of factors in. I know this is a big concern because of the fear of a failure of our one line, what what that would represent. Sort of how how does that factor into your calculations?
So TVD, so this is just, this is purely like looking at what flows do we need to move it to Ann Arbor and by when? The Jackson Road Force Main evaluation that we're doing. Just so you know, there's Tennessee standards and how we engineer everything and how we design things. You always design to the firm capacity. And when we say firm capacity, just to know what that means, that's defined as the maximum flow rate that a pump station can produce with one of the largest pumps out of service. So by nature, always designing a pump station to assume that the large pump goes down and kind of worst-case scenario. So when we flashback some of the pump station analysis, I think it's a previous slide to this one, and we're looking at, you know, where where are we at? You can look at Jackson Road, you can say, boy, we're going to, in future years, 20 years out, we're going to have 4.7. Again, we're switching from REUs to but we're going to be at 4.7 CFS and right now we can only pump 3.7. That's firm capacity. So redundancy is making sure when we do upsize those, that we upsize them, but we also plan for that worst case. Then the other question, I think what you're mainly getting at, Will, is like one force main, right, all the way to Ann Arbor? Part of our evaluation is going to be looking at the quality and condition of the existing force main. SIO spent a lot of money on making sure hydrogen sulfide gas is contained and we're not smelling up Ann Arbor with that. But part of that is now that one of the air relief valves has failed, we got to get in there, replace that. That's a one in a, one, not very often, chance to cut open the force main and look at the condition. And based on that, we'll have recommendation. But yeah, I mean, you're looking at a significant capital cost on the road. If you were to pipe in a parallel force main, you know, six, I think it's five, five, five miles or so to end up in Ann Arbor. And that's something that we we have put really broad-based numbers to and shared with your financial consultant and and some others. But that, once we get a better idea of the force main, we'll we'll put a little bit more effort into estimating those costs. But redundancy is the fact that this particular study, though, is more of a planning-based study. Basically just saying, we have enough room. If not, where's the issues? Contractually, again, you're okay. Physically, there's some pump station upgrades that are going to be made. And that's important for the township to understand. Because as you, Ms. Carla Wortman engages different developers and OHM reviews site plans and the planning commissions, talking to them, negotiating some of the contributions that TUDs sometimes ask for or or want to contribute because they're asking for density, all this and that. It gives you something to base it on. It gives you, man, we have, we have needs on the fu, on the pump station. This, this, this development wants denser than what we would normally allow to allow for in a normal planning situation or per normal zoning. So one of the, you know, one of the contributions in the past is, well, we'll contribute towards those future upgrades. And and a couple of site plan developments already have contributed or plan to contribute towards future Jackson Road pump station upgrades. I would say just off the cuff and these numbers aren't final final, but you know, there's probably close to $2 million of pump upgrades that are going to be needed six years out. Hopefully less, but I'm underpromising so I can over-deliver later.
Okay. Mr. Luang.
Hey, Matt, I've got a question for you and your team. So part of the importance of you guys being here tonight and for the public that's watching is this is, you know, the star public will be eventually the public hearing for the master plan. And one of the features of this version of the master plan that's different than the last master plan is that the planning commission wanted to have the possibility to allow higher density or just residential and or higher density residential within the Jackson corridor for a lot of reasons, partly because there's transportation, pedestrian walks, the direct link to the city of Ann Arbor. And it's also a way to help preserve areas outside of the Jackson Road corridor for lower, lower intensity type uses. So my question is, when you guys did your study that put this out 20 years or even five years, did you look at the existing zoning when you came up with those? Or were you, were you aware of this desire on the part of the planning commission to allow additional density, residential density within the corridor? And and if not, would that, do you think that would impact the five and 20-year outlook?
I think great question. I think, you know, we, we did an exercise, Doug, a few, maybe not a few years, that was probably what it seems like just but we did a analysis on looking at the zoning, looking at potential possible build-out, looking at what if every, what if every single lot and parcel in the Jackson Road District went two stories high and developed uber dense? And we looked at that and looked at, coupled with, you know, landscaping requirements and stormwater requirements and knowing that, you know, it couldn't all the way develop. But knowing what we know, based everything on current zoning and current SEMCOG population projections. So if something that was zone commercial were to become a very highly dense residential, it would just, it would, it would shorten up that time span quite a bit because um quite a bit. Because residential, actually, I mean, aside from a highly intense uh restaurant, uh residential's, you know, uses a lot more water than, say, an auto, an auto uh dealership. Um, those are pretty actually not, not intensive. So, and we use Ann Arbor. So anytime anyone who wants to know, how do you calculate it? How do you assume um sewage use for parcel? Ann Arbor has a table A and it's based on square footage and type of use. Um, and those coincide and you can place every single one of those uses that they have um into a different zoning district. Um, so I would say we're probably, if, if that were master planned and, and the intensities went up, that would probably just slide that range back a little bit more. Um, everything really is based on that twenty-two hundred R U's. I mean, that's, that's really what, what we're dealing with. Um, and just to put that in perspective, like at a two hundred and fifty unit subdivision, but two hundred and fifty dwelling units is two hundred and fifty R U's. That represents a little more than ten percent of your remaining capacity. So it can get eaten up in a heartbeat.
Okay, um, I have a kind of a follow-up question to that, Matt. And that is, I want to make sure I understood, stand the um kind of design flow assumptions. And uh, so you measured the flow. Then, did you add, in order to get to the remaining R U's, did you add the R U's that aren't currently being used but have been promised to or allocated to uh the Jackson Road properties? I'm just trying to figure out, is there a gap there between these, this is the existing flow, but we've also allocated R U's?
We did not do a gap analysis, and that's a great way to term it. I don't, if, I couldn't see who was talking. Was it Jan?
Yes.
And uh, I, we did not go back and, and I guess Lucas or, or Sally. I don't think we went back and compared the S A, the S A D roll, who bought, purchased, and where, where's that gap? Um, that would be a good exercise to do, but we were simply just looking at what's left. And Cy has been operating kind of on a first come, first served. Um, you don't just approve R U's. Cy has done a good job of making them go through the planning process. And honestly, um, pretty much getting through detailed engineering before any R U's are, are guaranteed to a developer.
Okay, so that means that what the R U's that are available don't include those that, that have been allocated but not used?
Yep, correct, correct.
Okay, so the, when, when the, the numbers of having, um, you know, so many R U's available don't include the R U's that have, they're just calculating, they're just measuring the flow and saying, okay, that equals X R U's. So we have X additional R U's available, but that doesn't account for all the properties within the sewer district, right, have been allocated a certain number of R U's? Was that?
Yes, some, some properties have purchased um a, a large amount and don't ever use them or haven't needed to, or even um haven't developed to that full, full promise. And some property have, have had zero and looked and went to the board to request those. Um, and again, it's a first come, first served. You're absolutely right. Like, yeah, you went through and said, what have we promised? It doesn't mean that you're stuck and can never produce that flow. It just means that from a capacity standpoint, something needs to be done at Jackson Road and or the contract has to be renegotiated with Ann Arbor.
How difficult would it be to, you know, come up with, in addition to what hasn't, what's, what's being used, what has been allocated?
It's a long tedious um spreadsheet exercise, but I mean, it would probably take a, a few days of somebody with a lot of patience to comb through that, that old S A D roll. We took it and digitized it. Um, we've done exercises like that before, but I would, I would say it would, I don't know, I don't wanna.
Yeah, I, I understand, but yeah, it's, yeah, it's a little weekend, it's a few days.
It would take a good solid uh half, you know, three or four days of, of analysis, I think. And then we could quickly compare that to what we have here. And I don't think it's a insurmountable task at all.
It seems like a term like.
Something that needs to be done.
Like maybe calling them encumbered, uh, R U's is a better way of thinking about them.
Kind of put it. Um, the, the other follow-up question is, is there any combined uh storm and sanitary in Cyo? No?
That's exactly what we want to get rid of when we say, we want to chase down the I N I. We really want to find where stormwater is getting in and whether it's groundwater or inflow. And no, there's no, there's no combined sewers at all. Those are illicit, and we try to remove those. Um, we found some massive leaks um on some older manholes that were gushing in water, like, you know, gallons per minute. And uh, we, we take care of those immediately. So as Steve, as Scott said, as Steve's doing more maintenance and having his staff get in there, if they're finding things, we encourage them to uh contact a contractor or stop those. Because really what that's doing, it really isn't changing your contract capacity too much, unless it's constant. Um, but what it's doing is really when it, when it starts storming and raining, it's really driving the heat up, and that really is gonna impact your uh pump station capacity more so than your contract capacity.
All right, uh, I want to note that Commissioner Sharma has joined virtually. Um, and all right, any other questions of those who have, uh, commissioner members that have, commission members that have joined virtually? Do you have any questions for Matt?
Or Lucas.
Um, can, this is Jacqueline, and I'm actually also virtual but by phone because I'm having some weird problems joining the regular Zoom. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Please, go ahead.
So I, I'll just ask all my questions at once because this is, I, I can't see if you are uh hearing them. So just, just a couple of quick follow-up questions for clarification. The metering period was April to November twenty twenty, obviously during the pandemic. And I'm just curious if that's a typical year or if that's considered typical or anything, I guess, how that might differ from a typical year. So that's one question. A second, the peak um I N I, it sounds like suggests infiltration south of Jackson where there is a creek. And of course, um, Gelman uh discharges to one of the unnamed tributaries of Honey Creek in that area. So I'm curious whether that discharge could be um contributing to that peak flow. And then, um, finally, Matt, I know that you've, you repeatedly mentioned to the planning commission that residential uses a lot more than commercial, but I wonder if there's like some overall general comparison of the kinds of levels of water use associated with different zoning um kinds of uses. And maybe that's a table, if you have something that you can provide for us. It doesn't have to be described verbally now, but just curious more about, so we can think about that. Uh, so those are my three questions. Thank you.
Yeah, all really good questions as usual, Jacqueline. Um, so answer your question. I will forward to Jan and um Jessica, the Ann Arbor Table A. Just so maybe you can include those in the meeting minutes for tonight's meeting, then you can see those. Um, it's, or you can go to Ann Arbor's website. Uh, we reference it. It has all sorts of uses. You can look at it, how it's calculated. It's, it's very useful. Um, and if you have any.
Great, thank you.
Feel free to reach out to me. The pandemic question was verbatim a question I asked of our staff. Um, because I found that interesting. And in fact, we've done a lot of these meterings all throughout Southeast Michigan, all throughout the Midwest, to be honest. And uh, we really haven't seen a huge correlation dip one way or another. In fact, a lot of bedroom, more bedroom type communities, we actually saw increases in flows because more people were at home, they were flushing the toilets. Kind of saw the diurnal, I call it diurnal flow, where usually you have your typical alarm clocks go off six o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, you have people taking showers and getting ready for work. And then the flows come way down. And then come about four o'clock, people start showing, coming home from work and running the kitchen sink and running dishwashers and starting to make dinner and going up and then tapering back down at night. Just depending on the mix of zoning and the mix of uses, we've seen different patterns in different communities, whether they're intense industrial or intense bedroom communities. Um, Cy, that's why we look back twenty years. We, we found just normal ebbs and flows. And there, and that's why I think Lucas said, we didn't see anything crazy low. We didn't see anything crazy high. It was right in line. Um, and honestly, with a lot of the restaurants in the area being a lot of drive-through, a lot of drive-throughs on Jackson Road, but a lot of carryout still going on, residential being used. Um, it, it didn't really cha-change. There was nothing from an average day that was like, man, we really shouldn't have metered because really, we had a good established baseline flow for your everyday sewage uses. What we're really trying to capture in the meter data analysis is I flow. That's really the key with the meter. Uh, what, what, or in different terms. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but um.
Yeah.
It's a really cool time to meter during that because it kind of proved to us that the flows didn't really change and it gave us a really good solid baseline flow before there was a pandemic, during a pandemic, and your system behaved very, very standard.
Interesting. And then the final question about um the creek south of Jackson and any possible contribution of Gelman.
Very, very much so. I mean, that, that's an area that probably needs to be investigated. To be honest, I probably need to spend some time with the utility department, maybe walking that corridor and seeing what things have changed and looking to see if there's any manholes that are, you know, within an area where flows can get higher and, and lead to any infiltration. But um, I'm thinking of the area behind the old, what was Tubal Tango? Kind of the areas where we're noticing some of the abnormal high peaks. And again, Lucas explained it too. Those aren't crazy high peaks. Those aren't like, oh, my God, you got a major problem. Those are just your highest danger system. I mean, Lucas, what are some of the peaking factors you've seen in other systems that aren't very well, very good?
Well, I mean, even, even within this system, you know, for that district, the peak hour was uh about a third of a CFS. And we were at four for the peak hour at Jackson Road. So, I mean, it's, it's just a small portion of that. It's not a lot.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll have to investigate that, Jackie, a little bit. But I mean, yeah, the flows that get discharged to that, that tributary to Honey Creek or whatever we want to call it. I mean, it's something that we should probably go look at. I mean, even a tree falling and knocking a frame or cover off or something could, could, could lead to a lot of I N I, so.
Okay, thanks so much, Matt.
Any other questions from those that are joining virtually? All right. And thank you very much, and we'll look forward to that follow-up.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the time.
Thanks so much, Matt. Thanks, Lucas. All right, with that, um, we're gonna move um into our um advertised public hearing uh for our master plan. And I just um, uh, want to say that uh I'm gonna uh move, that we're gonna just go ahead and open the public hearing and we'll have a, we'll have action to close the public hearing at the end. Um, and the rules for public hearing, we'll start with um, uh, anyone uh present in the room. And if they want to make a public comment, and then we'll move to online participants. Um, and you can uh indicate that you want to participate by raising your hand, by using the raise your hand button found at the bottom of your screen or the top of your screen if you have a tablet. And then your microphone will be enabled one at a time until all online participants um have, have um the opportunity to speak. And then we'll move to anyone who's on the phone. And again, directions for that, you raise your hand by pressing star nine and press star six to unmute. So um with comments, um unless you're, are limited to three minutes unless you're representing an organization, and then the timer is five. Um, all right, then we'll start with anyone uh present who would like to address the uh planning commission and the board of trustees regarding um our, our master plan. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to online participants.
Are there any interested public? Please raise your Zoom hand. Got about twelve attendees with us. Um, the first hand is Rob Pattinson. Rob.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to propose a community center be included in the master plan. My family moved here in the mid-seventies from Creel Crescent in Ann Arbor. As kids, we've missed living a few houses from the Creel Park and a neighborhood full of kids. Zeeb ninety-four area is a desert of play spaces for children. And it's sad to say, nothing has changed in intervening forty-five years. Three hundred North Zeeb is the perfect spot for a community center. There are at least two thousand homes within a mile of the property. There are seven hundred and fifty homes alone just in the subdivisions at Zeeb and Park. Now the township has the Zeebroad sidewalk to make it safer for children to get to the playground at the old Xerox site. With twenty-nine acres of space and buildings, three hundred North Zeeb has plenty of space for all of the following play and learn spaces. A soccer field, a baseball field, a playground, a dog park, a skate park, a community garden. Once we find out if the property is a brownfield or superfund site, live fishing classes could be given on the pond. The factory building could hold basketball courts, volleyball courts, a climbing wall. The office section could be adapted into classrooms for continuing education, dance classes, community education, meeting rooms for local organizations, community theater, a childcare center, a senior center, an art center. The Ann Arbor Public Library could open a branch in the office section. The huge parking lot is perfect for park and ride carpooling and vehicle charging stations. And as the gateway to Cyo Township, how perfect is this location for a parking area for people interested in the trails and sidewalks available now through the parks and pathways village? Zeebroad connects to the border to border trail to the north and to Jackson Road and all the trails and sidewalks to the south of ninety-four. I would suggest planting a lot of trees along the edge of the property facing ninety-four to help lessen the impact of road noise on the area. A berm topped with trees and bushes along the fence line would protect neighboring homes from headlights, noise, and maintain some of their privacy. A recycling center would be another good addition and show that Cyo Township really is interested in sustainability. In the early two thousands, Cyo residents rejected the Costco proposal and wanted the area north of ninety-four dedicated to public and government spaces. I hope that the preservation of our rural character is still a high priority for the current planning commission, D B A, and board of trustees. Please choose to serve the residents of Cyo Township and develop three hundred North Zeeb into a community center and celebrate our community with a true and welcoming gateway. On a side note, Doug, thank you for clarifying the S A D tables in the new master plan draft. I would recommend reinserting the neighborhood cost and township S A D cost columns so that residents can see how much they can expect to pay in future S A Ds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rob. Are there any other interested public? Please raise your Zoom hand. All right, I see none, Jim.
Maybe we can wait just a good thirty seconds to make sure. And, and no phone?
Uh, no, the people, the only person joining by phone is Jackie. So I have ten members of the public.
Okay, one last look, and then I'll entertain a motion to um close the public hearing on the, uh, draft master plan.
Someone? If I can. I don't even know.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Moved by, we, we're, you know, collaborating here, right?
Right, right.
Okay, so moved by clerk, our clerk, and seconded by Commissioner Moore. Any further discussion? Yes. Mr. Luhan.
I would just like to say one thanks to Rob Pattinson for his comments. And just to let the public know that might be watching this or watching this later, you know, we did receive a fair amount of public comment during the 63-day period that went out to adjacent communities, and we tried to make most, if not all, of those changes. So we did listen to, I understand there might only be one person here for to have public comment, but we did receive quite a fair amount of public comment previously, so that has been incorporated into the master plan.
And, okay.
There's also public.
And so anything else, Doug, I forgot to ask if you wanted to say a few words before, you know, so.
No, I mean, I I can just give a real brief overview of the process, just so those that Planning Commissioners, Township Board, and those that are watching at home. I'll discover the September 24th memo I sent you, there are some required steps in this process. These, this, the process of adopting a master plan is based on Public Act 33 of 2008, which is the Michigan Municipal Planning Act. It's not anything that we've developed on our own, this is something that's required by state law, and all the steps that we are, we have taken up to this point and the steps that we'll be taking in the future that go back to the end of 2019 when we set out the first, what's called an intent to plan, which is a notice that goes out to all the adjacent communities that surround Sci-O Township as well as all the, all the utilities like DTE and consumers and the railroad and all of those kinds of folks. That was done quite a while ago. Then after that intent to plan goes, we actually start to develop the plan. And we had a steering committee back then that was made up of Township Board members and Planning Commission members. And that steering committee reviewed sections of the plan that became completed as we completed them. They also reviewed all of the public input plans that we had. And incidentally, you know, COVID threw our master plan a curve because we had, we had in-person public participation planned for April of 2020, and everything stopped in March of 2020, so we had to completely retool how we were to obtain public input. And we did that. And that was a part of, of course, part of the preparation of the plan. After the steering committee was satisfied that the plan was ready to go to the Planning Commission, it was sent to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission then reviewed the plan, and we went through a page-by-page review of the plan that that occurred over the course of probably three or four months. After the Planning Commission was satisfied with the plan, it went to the Township Board, where the Township Board allowed the distribution of the plan. At that point, it was only, the plan was being sent to adjacent communities to get their input. That's a required part of Public Act 33, is called this distribution of the plan. That 63-day distribution comment period ended in late August. We did receive comments from the city of Dexter and from Lodi Township, and in both cases, we tried to address those comments. And we did receive a number, as I mentioned previously, a number of comments from the public because the master plan was on the township website during that 63-day distribution period. So the public had quite a bit of time to comment and think about the plan, and that's probably why we didn't get a lot of comments this evening. So we did make some changes based on the 63-day period. We're now in the public hearing stage. This is a required public hearing, and that's, which is, which is occurring this evening. The, what I would expect is that we would receive comments from the public, comments and questions from the Planning Commission and the Township Board members. We will then take the plan or those comments back, make any final adjustments, and then hopefully have this on a Planning Commission agenda for sometime in October for the planning. Optimistically, I would hope that the Planning Commission would be ready to adopt this sometime in October. And at this point, I know there has been discussion on the part of the Board of Trustees to be the approving body of the, of the master plan, and I understand that decision may occur at tomorrow night's meeting, if the Township Board wants to do that. And if they do want to assert the right to be the final approving body of the Township Board, it's just one more step that would go from Planning Commission's approval onto the Township Board for their approval. So that is, that's really the process where we're at. You know, I, I provided the Planning Commission and the Township Board with the September 20th memo that talked about some of the changes that have occurred between this master plan and the current existing master plan, the approved current, approved master plan from 2015. So at this point, I will turn it back over to you, Chair Person Culberson. And if anyone has any specific questions about the two memos that I provided or any other comments, we will list them and try to address them in upcoming drafts at this point.
And, and so when, there is a motion on the floor to close the public hearing. I wanted to check and make sure there wasn't any other comment from the public, you know, after Doug sort of gave his process and.
Yes, I see no Zoom hands.
Okay, all right. Then do a roll call vote of Planning Commission, and then you guys can do your roll call vote of Board of Trustees.
Okay, Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma? Commissioner Corto?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson?
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Clerk Flintoff, please call a roll of the Board of Trustees.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Vogel? Motion passes.
All right, great. Well, then I think we'll proceed to questions or instant discussion, and we'll, this time we'll start with our virtual folks, so we can take turns. So Planning Commission members, Board of Trustees members, are there questions that you would like to pose or points of discussion that you would like to bring up? You can, like, yeah, okay, Commissioner Sharma.
Hi there. I was intrigued by the, or rather impressed by the comments made by one of the members of public around the community center. I guess I just have a brief question here, and we'll answer that, Doug or anybody else. How do we consider such a, such a possibility? I mean, this is obviously, that involves a huge amount of planning and also investment, but how do we incorporate that in our master plan? Can somebody go and mute in the background?
I'll make sure you did.
Okay. But yeah, and Doug or anybody else wants to answer that? How do we kind of incorporate such a, such a idea in our master plan that we spent so many months working on? Totally.
Mr. Luhan?
Yeah, I can try to address that. So the, the township has a future land use master plan, which we're talking about right now, and we also have a recreation master plan. They're both, they're separate documents, although they are related. We refer to the recreation master plan in the future land use document, and the ideas raised by Mr. Patterson would be very appropriate for the recreation master plan. The recreation master plan is required if the township is to ask for grant monies from the state of Michigan, and a community center like that could be eligible for grant money, both for land acquisition and for construction of facility. But the appropriate place to actually have that kind of detailed discussion would be in the recreation master plan. And in the future, in the future land use plan, which we're dealing with tonight, that does reference the recreation master plan. So there's, there's, that would be the, in my opinion, the proper sequence of events that should appear in the recreation master plan, and then the township master plan references that.
I'm going to keep virtual. Anyone else?
Jackie.
Jackie? Okay, Jack, Commissioner Corto, trustee Corto.
Thank you. Just to briefly follow up on that, I think in some of the communication that was sent to the board, one resident suggested that meaning that that community center idea is something that DDA could participate and take on. And Mr. Luhan, I don't know if that's more to you to talk about how that might be incorporated in the process or maybe supervisor Hathaway, you could also address that. I, I just was trying to figure out all those pieces and how that would work.
I don't know how that would all work, trying to, I know, again, the DDA master plan is a separate document from the, from this master, from the future land use plan, which is what we're talking about tonight. I, I received some of those emails really too late in the day to try to figure out how we could relate those ideas or if we could relate those ideas. But I will certainly look into that before this master plan comes back to the commissions. Other than that, I can't really, I don't know at this point.
I, I can add to that. The, the DDA is currently looking at its, updating its master plan. So if people have ideas for things that the DDA might include in its master plan, you know, those could be submitted to the DDA. The site that Rob described does lie within the DDA district, so it certainly, you know, could be considered, but it's, it's a privately owned parcel, so, I mean, we, you know, it's, it would, it would, I would assume necessitate some kind of transaction because I'm not sure that, you know, the private owners of that land had in mind to create a community center. But, you know, anything is possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, trustee Noel?
Okay, I was just looking through my emails, and I do see an earlier email from Pam Boyd that came this morning, and I think that what she was saying was, this is already in the DDA master plan. It's not something that they were considering. It's in fact in the master plan that's currently out there. And she appears to give page references. So I guess my question is, when something has already gone into, say, the Parks and Rec master plan, the DDA master plan, how is that then incorporated into the Sci-O Township master plan?
Mr. Luhan, you want to take that question? How that's different, the land use plan versus the other master plan?
Well, I, I did not see those emails till late in the day, so I would have to look at the references that they're talking about. For future land use issues with, you know, when a developer comes to us, or is a project is in front of us, or someone is asking us about a project, we don't normally look at the DDA plan as far as future land uses or what might be planned. I think, yeah, I, I need to look into that to see if there's, to make sure there's no conflict between the DDA plan and the master plan and the recreation master plan. And, and more importantly, to make sure that they're all, you know, roaming in the same direction. So I think that's, but no, I, I was not in the office until later this afternoon, so I, I saw a flurry of emails about four o'clock today, so I did not have time to really dig into them.
All right, so what you're saying is, yes, you'll dig into it and we'll look at that. Okay, Commissioner, oh, yes. Did you have a follow-up on that?
No, I didn't. I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, good. Commissioner Hyde?
Thank you. I have a question about procedure from here. If we have, there's been a few things I've noted that are punctuation and detail. Are we going to have an opportunity to do that kind of review in, it isn't policy, it's more just cleanup? Would we be doing that in a meeting, Doug, or would we do it now in front of the public? I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, what I would prefer is if you have non-policy discussion points that, please, you know, just email those to me, and I will do my best to incorporate those into the document. I think Jan mentioned we, we have been getting comments like that over the course of the last year, and I think I might have missed a couple, unfortunately. But now that we're sort of, hopefully, on the five-yard line, if you have those, I think it would be more productive if you just sent those to me directly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's best to talk about, you know, substance pieces like, you know, the DDA master plan of aligning, alignment, and, you know, other substantive pieces this evening. And then I would encourage Board of Trustee members and Planning Commission members to mark up pieces. I've done that too, so. And then I think I would, is there anyone else virtually that hasn't asked a question? And then I want to do one round through everyone, and then I'll come back to Commissioner Sharma, if that's all right? All right, is there anyone else virtually that has a, has a question or a discussion point?
Greek Cop has his hand up, but I think he's a member of the public.
Public, yeah.
Rakesh Sharma has already spoken, but his hand is up.
And so anyone here that has?
Rakesh wants to go here.
Yeah, but I was going to start back here and then go back to Rakesh.
Did you want us to talk about the DDA master plan or not?
Yeah, I do, so.
Before we switch gears. I just wanted to put on the record, I sent an email earlier today to the Planning Commissioner and Doug Luhan, pointing out that the page 60 of our draft, when it defines the gateway subarea, it also includes commercial use and development. My understanding is we're going to take a look at that, and I thought that that subarea would not include commercial use. And then I did find your sustainability language on page 75.
Okay. Commissioner Holland, do you, would you like to address the DDA piece?
I would. I think that everyone should take note that that is a 2006 master plan that's being revised now. Take note on the future land use plan that the trustees, the Board of Trustees, and the Planning Commission for two seconds of a master plan have proposed. The property in question is a mixed-use office and industrial, and it has changed hands as mixed-use office and industrial zoning. Additionally, if you look also in the master plan, you'll see that it's showing as I-1, I-2, and IRP zonings. And I saw that there was a reference, I got the email, I read that too. There was a reference in the DDS master plan that, basically, the budgets that you see and stuff in the 2006 master plan that they're referring to. The 2008 recession reduced the development, thus reducing the DDA income. So of course, there've been changes in the projects, the number of projects they're going to, they can take on. And always remember that the, if the DDA overspends, that the full faith and credit of Sci-O Township and its taxpayers make up that difference. So we, DDA has been conservative. So we, DDA has been conservative. In addition, I think you need to note that, that in that Master Plan, it shows that we would spend millions of dollars in extending the DDA of the Boulevard to Parker Road, which of course, we'd had to turn on a dime on that. And as I understand it, the lowering of property values in 2008 and beyond recession reduced the taxing for rental revenues to the DDA, which meant that they had to adjust their policies in their projects. And just for the record, the recent projects include, do include donations to transportation alternative pathways, bus shelters, Boulevard signs removals and so on. And, and there's several proposals on roads in the DDA District. So the idea is not real palatable to take a, to reduce our revenues by taking, taking a piece of property in the DDA District and taking it off the tax rolls and converting it to a park unless of course, the Sciop Township wants to float a bond issue or, or wants to have a township-wide SAD to purchase that property from the developers. So that's what, pretty much what DDA's position is at this point and kinda where they're, what they're looking at.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharma, we'll go back to you if you have additional.
Yeah. And just a basic question. Trustee Noel, you, you referred to a page number, the DDA Plan, what page number is that? That's awesome.
I'm gonna have to scroll back in my email.
That's fine.
Okay, no wait. Doug, page 17, figure seven, Future Land Use Plan map. It's part of the Town Center Public Government section.
Page 17, fig- figure what?
Figure seven.
Figure seven. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you very much. That's all.
Yeah. And Mr. Luhan, I'd like that.
Yeah, a little light just, little light just went out of my head. That's, that's two Master Plan versions ago. That, the Master Plan has been changed. That, that used to be part of the Town Center, used to have part of the Master Plan that called for an area that went from Jackson along Zeeb, north on Jackson and south on, or south, north of Jackson on Zeeb, south of Jackson on Zeeb, called the Town Center North and the Town Center South. That used to be Town Center North. That was removed in the 2015 Master Plan version. So we, the Town Center no longer, those designations no longer exist. So that would, that, that's the, I think there's where the incongruency is coming from.
Doug, is there a new DDA Master Plan?
It's in progress.
Yeah, there has, from what I understand, there has not been a new DDA Master Plan since they adopted that one back in, one of 2006.
So really, it's still the current one?
It's still the current one, correct? Although it's referencing an old Master Plan map.
This, this isn't a DDA Master Plan so much as it is a reference in the DDA Master Plan to an old map from an old.
Yes.
Master Plan for the Township as a whole.
Correct. That's what it sounds like. But I'll, I'll check.
Now, now I get it.
I will verify. I will verify.
All right. All right. Okay. Other, any other comments from those in the virtual realm?
Oh, there's one hand.
Yes. Jackie Carteau.
Okay. Commissioner and trustee Carteau.
Thank you. So I, I'm going back to that SAD table that Mr. Pattinson referred to. And I know we've spent time going back and forth and I appreciate, Mr. Luhan, that you all did some simplifying here. But I, I think maybe it would be useful for us to decide, what is the information that we most want to have here? And if we're going to include the table, can we make sure that we, I, I mean, one of my concerns, this, this table does clarify years, but in the previous page, on page 20, there's a description of significant upgrades of what's been done, such as West Liberty Park, Marshall East and West Delhynstein, that don't, that don't appear in this table. And so it's just really, it's still confusing to me what is actually included here. And then furthermore, there's this whole issue of what has been the Township-wide SAD project, which I believe is what you mean by the Act 188 SAD. And then which has been the local SAD, which are the neighborhoods coming together. And I'm guessing that's what you mean by the Act 246 SAD. But I think there have been others. So I, I guess my thinking about this table is if we're going to include it, we should be as clear and accurate as possible. Maybe a text description of the activities would be better than the table to really clarify what we've done. But that's a question that I would appreciate others, women on commenting, because I know this has been an area of concern.
Thank you. And, yeah, I, I just wanted to, I had a, a question about that too, because this is one of those things like, is there a different way to reference what the SAD is? And can there be a summary on the website or something where we can hear, talk about, okay, the Special Assessment District, how it works and, and then reference a different, some sort of link that is updated annually or something on the SADs, the projects that are, you know, past projects, projects that are proposed? And how, for instance, you know, if, if there was, you know, someone who wanted to initiate, you know, a property owner's SAD, you know, sort of like consumer-friendly, resident-friendly, so that we're not trying to document so much in the Master Plan, is explain that this opportunity exists?
I think that makes sense. This, this, I mean, this is, you know, information that people might find interesting, but it's kinda backward-looking for a document that's meant to sort of, you know, be a vision for the future.
Commissioner Moore?
You know, this chart doesn't really, it doesn't have the, the projects that were done in 2019 or 2020. It's not even a complete chart.
Yeah. I, I think, I think this could use some work. Rework.
And so are we saying that we want to capture the details elsewhere and capture the concept and the hows and linking it to the details elsewhere?
I would agree with you, Jan, the latter, that we, you know, capture the how, generally what we've done, and in particular, since the last tranche, tranche or trench, I never know. Which sounds better. Is, is in the end of 2022, I mean, this is gonna be a question pretty quickly for us if we're even gonna continue this. I mean, so I think that that should be suggested along with the bus mileage too, just when these things are coming due, just that, these are questions if we wanna continue investment in this, so. But I agree to kind of describe generally what we've done with the Township-wide road SAD, the mechanism that more people can go from where I'm from.
It seems though, that the charts are, give you a really good snap, they educate our citizens and, because I've heard a lot of comment from different, various charts throughout this process. So it's a way to keep people informed because we don't, I mean, we do have our newsletter, but it seems like it's something that our residents pay attention to. I would, I would be happy to do it either way. But I think if we are gonna use this chart, we should include 2019, 2020 and 2021.
Listen, therein lies the problem with a chart like this, because if this got adopted today, next year it would be outdated. And so I, I kinda like the idea of referencing the SADs as was described, how they work, we've done them, and then reference maybe a, a link on the website or something like that.
You give her the table?
Yep.
I tend to think that's.
Well, we could, we could, I think what Jan was suggesting is this is, and I think initially you were suggesting the same thing, Commissioner Moore, is putting that information, making it available somewhere else, in a place where we can sort of update it more easily than in the, in the Master Plan.
And does, is there like a, an annual report that SAD does? Or I've been just trying to think of, you know, it, it would be good if, if, if there was a point in time that it did get updated.
Sure.
If, if it would make sense at what point in time.
We just, the Township is just sort of relaunching the Roads Advisory Committee. And presumably, that's the kind of document that a committee like that would produce, some kind of summary annual report, probably not as, you know, nice and fancy as a Master Plan. But, you know, it's still, you know, providing the information, making it available to the public.
So it sounds like we have some summary information and that could be posted and then we'll, we'll do concept here. Okay.
So give her a vision of that's what you're saying?
Yeah. And how it works and?
As opposed to the history.
And the history is elsewhere. Okay. All right. Other notes of substance that anyone would like to, to bring up? Yes.
Well, when you're ready for me. I, I've always been, I've been working on the last Master Plan, not been about musts and commitments that the Township makes. It's more about a vision and encouraging and promoting and so on. So I have to note on page 75 slash 82, depending which numbers you're looking at, that it's called Other Township Plans and Policies. And in the second sentence, "When policies are officially adopted, they commit a jurisdiction to a series of actions. Those actions are carried out through implementation plans, such as an amendment to the zoning ordinance." And so particularly on the issue of sustainability, not that I'm against sustainability, but as, as a law, as a club to beat people with, bad choice of words.
You sure you have an opinion about that?
Is Sciop Township ready to pass ordinances that require its residences to comply with what may be like, be like, very likely be costly, costly to its residences? And then through an enforcement action, make them do it. And that's by, by saying that you're gonna commit to it and implement it. So one vote, thought for everybody else.
And I think, and this is page 75, if you're just looking, and it's 80-something in the packet.
Eighty-two.
Right, eighty-two in the packet. And I think where we might get tripped up here is under sustainability, when it says the sustainable goals and policies found throughout the Master Plan. I don't think there are any sustainable policies in the Master Plan. And so I think, you know, just like the Master Plan is future-looking and then there are some recommendations, the, the, we don't have policies in the Master Plan.
Well, those are derived from the Master Plan.
Correct.
I've, I've heard fellow commissioners refer to the fact that our Master Plan, we're setting policy here.
Right.
So if we feel that, if the, if the planning commissioners feel that they're setting policy and you're saying that we're not, are we, aren't we? And, and doing some research, quite often that's what they refer to as, as Master Plans having policy.
Okay.
I'm just gonna say, I think it is true that our Master Plan is our policy and is about our future. And I think issues related to sustainability are important. Now, we can wait around until, you know, we're trucking in water or, or, or can't grow any vegetables or, you know, I, I just read the horror stories in the news about what's happening in California. We're not there yet, but I do think that we should, as a community and certainly as part of the leadership, we should be looking at that stuff. Now, to your point, I mean, I think there's two points to be taken from, correct me if I'm wrong. One is, does sustainability language belong in our Master Plan? And I would say, yes, it does. And the second one is, are we committed to forcing people to do things? I don't even think we're there yet. We just put together a task force. And as far as I know, they're still just beginning to work at it and figure out some stuff that's relevant to Sciop Township. But I think that in terms of planning and policy, we do wanna be sustainable as a community. I don't think that that's a far-fetched concept for, for, for our Master Plan to address. Now, how deeply we get into that, we may be getting a little bit ahead of our task, our sustainability task force, so.
Because it has to be an ordinance to be enforceable, basically. And the devil's in the detail. Right?
That's the way you worded it.
And I do wanna go back to the introduction. And it does talk about, the Sciop Township Master Plan articulates a vision for the Township's future growth and development. And it is the primary officially adopted township document which sets forth growth and development policies for the future of the community. So there is a, both a vision and a policy base, I guess.
And the definition of policy, I mean, what, what that means. I mean, you know, years ago, I attended Doug's sort of orientation to being a Planning Commissioner. And you made a distinction between, if I remember correctly, the Master Plan as sort of the source of, of other sort of laws, I guess. And maybe that's what, where I'm thinking of when I'm thinking of policies. But it was after that that the Planning Commission engaged in, you know, a Master Plan implementation effort. And that's what yielded the open policy, which is cited in here, you know, which is an actual zoning ordinance. So I guess that's what I was thinking. I was thinking sort of like, well, the ideas, the goals, the sort of broad brush kind of approach to sustainability, for example, is, is enshrined and described in, in the Master Plan. But the actual nuts and bolts of how that happens occurs in, you know, the Planning Commission generating actual zoning amendments. And those aren't in the Master Plan.
I agree. I agree. When we started out on this journey a couple of months ago or three months ago, Mr. Luhan actually mentioned that this document is supposed to be a vision in the document. So but obviously, we don't wanna just have a vision that is shallow. On the contrary, like what just said, maybe have some depth and substance to it. So kind of, kind of, kind of, we cannot make the policy like was said a moment ago, the zoning rules and regulations and this, but we certainly need to set the vision in this document because this document is kind of what will guide us for many, many years beyond this point in time. For example, many towns talk about policy, sorry, a Master Plan that encompasses certain things around lead standards for buildings, the future buildings have to conform to that. Or they talk about the use of water in toilets. Or they talk about the use of solar panels, or they talk about other similar things in some detail without creating rules or the policies or the zoning regulations, because that is probably a different process and a different journey. That's probably what our document should, our Master Plan should include, a very in-depth vision around these things, rather than just saying, we are for sustainability. That makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else on discussion point? Anyone else?
I have a different topic to ask him. So the language on page 28, PDU goals, PUD goal. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm only working from a document that has one page number on it. Yeah. Planned unit development goals. So as I look at these goals, one through seven, are these the community benefits that we've been discussing? That was my question as well.
They are, they are in effort to memorialize some of those community benefits, yes.
Okay, some.
Have we had goals for PUD before? This is a new?
This is a brand new section, no.
So why wouldn't it be one and the same? Why shouldn't it be? If we're going to memorialize PUD goals, why, why shouldn't it be? Just a question, why shouldn't it be the community benefits we're seeking?
I think they, I think they are. I think these are, yeah.
But it's not all inclusive?
No, not because there can be other public benefits. There can be, you know, there can be other benefits. So this is a new section of the master plan. And there, there was some discussion over the course of the last couple of PUDs about, you know, what is exactly a public benefit? And so we tried to list things that currently we believe are public benefits, but five years from now, maybe there's some other things that, you know, one of the things in here is like providing EV, you know, EV parking spaces. Well, five years ago, we wouldn't have thought of that. And so maybe five years from now, there could be other things. So this is not all, for one thing, this is the master plan, so this is not the zoning ordinance. We can't require these things, but we're trying to give a developer some guidance on, hey, these are things that we think are important, that you could include as part of your public benefit. There are other things, you know, there are things like great building architecture. There's things like substantial open space preservation. There's other things that are, that either, there could be lower density than is what is currently allowed within the district. You know, there are other things that could be considered a public benefit. But I think the group, I think the steering committee and/or the planning commission, I forget which one directed us to move on this particular, it might have been the steering committee, wanted some, to kind of focus a little bit on what the township thought was public benefit.
Commissioner Holland?
So back to the wording that I'm concerned with is so often, and I, I think that many people, planning commissioners, trustees, citizens of Scioto Township, when they think of master plan, they think of how it will affect developers in development and new housing and new, new development. And if we're setting, if, if, if we're setting a policy and committing to basically do zoning ordinance amendments for certain things, care what they are, they typically don't affect the resident and the voter so often. It has to do with new development. And I guess I'm, as a former developer, I'm somewhat offended by the fact that, that they all, that people and government think that the new people should pay for these things and that because they're there, they shouldn't have to do it. So for instance, if you're going to start requiring EV charging stations, which is a great idea because we're well on our way to doing that, then maybe every new house should have one. And maybe anybody who remodells their house should put one in. And DTE should plan, plan for all that. But to just, you know, it's kind of vague to me that, that the mindset always is about developers that this is what we're going to do, we're going to require it in the zone, you know, it's going to end up being a zoning ordinance amendment, which is what it says.
So your, just to clarify. So your comment is, like, you don't mind that the developers are asked to do that? You want the individual residents to be required to do it too?
So often it's laid on, these expenses are laid on the business, on the businesses. And businesses aren't all rich. You know, it's not like they can all just afford to do it. Any more than I can afford to do it, or you can afford to do it, anybody in this room can afford to do it. But because they're a developer, it's just assumed that, gee, they'll just put it in their numbers. You know, they'll, they'll expense it, they'll pay for it somehow because they're all getting rich in what they're doing. And quite often, as you'll see, as there's vacant properties up and down the corridor, they're gone. And sometimes it's because they try to comply too, too much.
This is a planned unit development, a kind of a different animal? I mean, you're talking...
Yes, they're looking for credits. It's, it's different with, with credits and PUDs, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're looking for density bonuses, which means they get something in exchange.
It's more of a, it's more of a dialogue, more of a negotiation with the township than a simple straightforward development. So I, it's, it's a little different.
This is proposing a township-wide policy.
This is a PUD goal. This is a PUD...
On page seventy-five.
No, this is twenty-eight.
Oh, we're on page twenty-eight. I told you I'd jump back, I wanted to jump back to other township policy, plans and policies, but okay.
Sorry.
You're proposing that, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I, I think that is an important part. And that is, and I think it goes back to making sure we maintain that balance between, you know, promoting economic development and, and protecting our natural open space and our agricultural resources and our development densities. All of that comes into that balance. It isn't just, you know, looking at, and as you enact ordinances, there needs to be that reflection as well. I agree.
And I think that we're very, we're in a more privileged situation in Michigan and in Scioto Township than in communities. There are some communities in our nation that are really, really hurting. And they're seeing the effects of climate change much swifter than we are. And as a, as a leadership, we cannot turn our eye to, I mean, I don't know that we, that, that many years old debate about whether or not climate is changing and whether or not some of that is due to man and woman. I hope we're beyond that, but we may find ourselves in the future asking just that, that same thing that you were just commenting about residents to change some of their ways. And that's going to be, talking about public comment on the master plan, I'm sure that it's going to bring in a bunch of public comment about, I got my rights. So, but it, it's, it's not an issue that we can, I'm, I'm talking about the sustainability language now. It's not an issue that we can avoid. We will do that at our own peril. As people watched river reservoirs, or water reservoirs in California go down for many years and debate about, you know, whether or not climate change was real. So I, I can, for one, can't sit here, Commissioner Holland, and tell you what Michigan's future is going to look like. You know, I was looking at some of the resources that this Commissioner Colversen provided us, where our water tables are, one of the, one of the articles. And then I did some research the other day where, particularly in southeast Michigan, we're in, they have various tables of where we're at drought versus dry. And many areas in the southeast part of Michigan are in the dry yellow area. So again, I don't know where we're going to be and it's hard to predict that. You know, where, where our worst days are going to be, or if we're going to have some worst days. But I think the issue of sustainability is an important one. And, you know, that's something that we as leaders in this community should be dealing with. Now, whether or not we're ordering people to do this or that, you know, that specific language in the, on page seventy-five with regard to sustainability, would you be comfortable with? Just looking at, you were saying, when policies are officially adopted, they commit a jurisdiction to a series of actions. I don't care if that sentence is deleted or it remains in there. So if that's, that's, if that language is, is objectionable to you, I'm not, I'm not, I have a problem with getting rid of that. Because right now, everything is up in the air with regard to what we're going to need to do about climate change for our community, but...
Well, I agree, but I guess I brought it up because are the trustees, is the board, are they ready to enforce what we, what we play down as a policy? And, and when people resist, then you have to take action. So it's, it's up to them. I, I don't, I just brought it up because as a responsible citizen, I think we should all be aware that if we say it's, to me, this is a must as opposed to a mayor show, or a mayor promote.
Yeah, I, I would agree, and not just for this, and so this is, take this away from sustainability. This is for all plans and policies. When the township adopts a master plan policy, it does not commit them to adopt the policy. We've had many policies over the years that the master plan of the township has never touched. So these are goals, these are twenty-year in the future, maybe this is going to happen. But to say that a policy in your master plan commits you to do something, it doesn't, it's not how a master plan works.
Exactly.
Yeah, I understand that, but that word should probably come out.
Exactly.
Or that sentence.
Well, it's, I think the concept, I think the concept is, if you step back from it, is accurate. That once, once, once the jurisdiction officially adopts something, then it's a commitment to, you know, enforce that, to do it. But this isn't that, this is, this is the basis for doing that. So I guess that's the distinction that I would make. But I, I hear what you're saying, Jay, and it's true. And we should be mindful of, of the commitment that we're making. But it's sort of hypothetical until the planning commission actually produces an actual zoning amendment. And then, then it becomes a real question.
Actually, the trustees, it's really their...
Well, yeah, you know, it becomes a question for the board of trustees. Do we want, do we want to officially commit to this by adopting or approving this zoning amendment?
That's why I keep saying it's up to y'all. Just wanted to make clear what...
You're gesturing this way, and you're aware it's up to y'all, so.
Yeah, yeah. No, but I think we're mindful of it. And I do want to make sure, you know, as we, we talk about all of, you know, the, the policies and amendments zoning, it, it does affect cost, it affects residents, it affects their, their multiple impacts with all of the, the, um, I guess, regulations that, that are adopted, so. All right, any other comments or questions? And I know I have a few, it's, it's mostly wordsmithing, it isn't of substance.
Just one, just one more question, and, and thank you, everybody, for all of your work on it. I know the commission has spent a lot of time on it, and Doug, thank you. I'll have some wordsmithing type suggestions I'll email to you. But I wanted to ask generally, how did you all consider the increase in renters in Scioto Township? And the fact that we'll probably continue to have more and more renters? Either of, of any income, I mean, just how much of that is a factor in the master plan?
So is your question, how did we, how are we accommodating that this is probably going to happen more? Or a need for this in the future?
A need for this in the future and also the fact that it's a different relationship, obviously, financial and, and otherwise, to, you know, promoting sustainability measures in order to what you're getting from developers versus, oops, I said what you're getting from developers, but what you're getting from developers. I showed my car, it was a matter of seconds. What you're getting from developers in terms of, especially rental properties where, you know, there's quite a, quite, quite a bit of money to be made when the market's left unchecked. So just curious.
Or lose.
Well, I could try, I could try to answer that. And the planning commission, I will say, is the one who has, they're the body who has kind of pushed this, this goal. And so I have to hand it to the planning commission for trying to address, you know, the need for more affordable type housing within the community. And how, and how that has been addressed in the current plan is, goes back to my, my question to Matt Parks earlier. And that was that the planning commission desired that additional residential density, whether that's rental or not, could be promoted within the part of the township that could most withstand that density. And that's the Jackson Road corridor, because we have sewer and water in the Jackson Road corridor. We simply can't have multifamily or higher density residential in the northern and southern parts of the township because there's no sewer and water. Now, someone could put their own sewer treatment plant in, but that's terribly unpopular, doesn't meet our current planning. So in a, the possibility of an increase in multifamily homes within the Jackson Road corridor, which is, which was hinted at in the last master plan, but is now much more openly discussed in the master plan that this is a possibility for developers because there's sewer and water. So that, that is a, that's a key component. Also, creating the gateway overlay area that goes from I-94 up to the city of Dexter, where we are promoting additional higher density residential areas. And there's, what else am I missing, Jan?
Those are, and also extending the Jackson Road corridor into, across Liberty, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, just in that, where there is sewer.
Yeah, that's one, that's one thing I failed to mention is one of the, one of the little map changes that we're proposing. And Mr. Kettler left, but the guy that was sitting behind me is, is the owner of the little triangular piece of property that there was an approved office project on called Living Point or something like that.
Crossroads.
Crossroads, I'd read it, it was called Living Point, but Crossroads. And he is requesting that that, that he be allowed to have multifamily. And it's going to be, I believe, a rental, I think it's for rent. Don't quote me on that, I think it is. And so a way to, so he first asked if we could just put it in the master plan as multifamily. Well, there's nothing multifamily master planned around there. However, it's right adjacent to the end where we previously entered the Jackson Road overlay district. And so we bumped it down a property to include this property in the Jackson Road overlay district, which the Jackson Road overlay district, the way it's now written, is, is allowing and/or promoting certain cases, certain circumstances, higher density residential. So that's a, that's a clear-cut case that, you know, we added a property that could accommodate higher density. But the whole corridor, you know, the way that Jackson Road corridor is now written is it's, it's promoting that. And so that's, those were the main, and, and the addition of the whole sustainability section, which we never had in the master plan before. So those are, those are the ways we tried to address, address those things.
And I think Sustick Cole has a hand up.
Me, Noel.
Noel, Cole, oh, jeez.
Okay.
I'm sorry, jeez.
Whatever.
Yes. Kathy.
I think it's Catherine too. All right. No.
Okay, I just have a general comment. I recall in prior master plans that the goal of preservation of the semi-rural character of Scioto Township is mentioned. And in this one, I, I see underland preservation goals, it does say, maintain rural character. But under community goals for the PUD goals, I don't see mention of preservation of the semi-rural character of the township. And I just wanted to hear what your discussion was on that.
So you're talking about specifically the PUD goals on page twenty-eight?
I'm noting that, yes, it's not included in the PUD... I'm noting that, yep, it's not included in the PUD goals. And then I do see on page twenty-five, underland preservation goals, preserve, maintain rural character is included. But I'm wondering about this phrase, the preservation of the semi-rural character of Scioto Township. I'm wondering why that's not here in the PUD goals.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great comment, and I would, I, I think I would like to add that. I think it's a good, good comment.
Okay. Any objections to addition of that goal?
I don't see any.
Everybody's saying, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Noel.
All right, any other?
I just wanted to address the question from the trustee Flintoff. I think in my brief experience on the planning commission, there's been some things that converge together. And one of them is, is this project that that was mentioned, the crossroads, and they're wanting to change. And that, that developed into a discussion about, well, would there be, because it's going from commercial to residential, would there be more use on our water system? And then we have that other project over the, Colton or Woodlands? That's all rental.
Woodland, what?
Up on. Jackson near Baker Road.
Woodview.
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 We're hearing that.
Then all the names get sort of jumbled together.
That's all rental.
Right, it's a quarter and sixty-four.
It's a four sixty-four.
Yeah, including a.
But I, I would be curious about development. The only, the last thing I just want to say, I'd be curious about something like the, the, the new development on Old Valley Drive and Ann Arbor-Saline Road. It's called the Ann Arbor. It's got a nifty, sniffy little name.
It's called like downtown.
Yeah, Ann Arbor Downtown or something. It is, it's for our Jackson Road corridor. It's a big apartment complex or, and a apartment complex, and then on the, on the street of Ann Arbor-Saline Road is some commercial shops. But none of those projects have come to us since I've been on the commission.
Well, the, the one that, the closest is the Woodview project. They've got commercial on Jackson with residential on the back.
And Doug, is, was the, this is jumping back to OHM's presentation, was the Woodview REUs considered in that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't.
And, and that's where that gap analysis, it tried to, because I think it sounded like what they used was SEMCOG data.
Right.
As opposed to, you know, REU commitments.
Right.
That are there. And, and obviously, that isn't committed yet, but it's certainly planned. So looking at those things, I think is, is, is important.
Including a potential twenty-four hour facility.
Yep.
That's a lot of use.
Yeah, well, we always ask during, you know, early on in the project, during the pre-application meetings, we always ask the utilities department and OHM to let us know how many, we always use our, you know, Matt's right, we always talk about REUs. We don't talk about gallons, but we always say, how many REUs are available? How many REUs are they asking for? And we try to, early on in the process, we try to figure out if there's going to be a problem. It wasn't that long ago that we were down to very few REUs left in the system before the last renegotiation with the state of Ann Arbor. That opened up quite a bit. But it, you know, it looks like the point of, you know, Matt's discussion with us is that, you know, we have capacity now, and if you start including some of these, if you start including high-density residential, that twenty-year problem starts to move up considerably. That, that's what we don't know.
See, Sally's head has just appeared on the screen.
Sally, did you want to say something?
I was going to say, in regards to your question about whether or not we included some of the REUs, I believe, and I'd have to dig back through my notes, but I believe that all the developments that are in review process that are either really close to approval or are looking promising, so Woodview, Sciouview, the rest of Trail Woods, all of those were included in the five-year projection.
Okay, the five-year.
The ones that felt were imminent, we'll say, that had either made it through planning commission or had recently been approved or under construction, I believe we included in that five-year projection. And then the twenty-year is purely SEMCOG. So the five-year was kind of a cross between what we knew was coming down the pipeline that was fairly imminent, and then SEMCOG as well, and then the twenty-year was just purely SEMCOG.
And, and just knowing how REUs are calculated in that three hundred gallons per day for a household and so forth. And if you look at the water sense fixtures and so forth that are actually required at this point, it, that's, that's a pretty hefty amount of, of water use.
Your wind vane is looking at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand gallons a day.
Yeah, and it would be interesting, I, I think that would be a really interesting piece, is to put a sub-meter on some of these developments to, to kind of see what they use versus what, you know, that, that, those projections are. Yeah.
Tina, that's, that's something you might want to look at, it's your sustainability task force, too, is, you know, Ann Arbor for a long time, I mean, it's, there are sewer, there are combined sewer disconnect, et cetera. But as far as water-saving devices, particularly on some of the older homes, and whether.
How, how you can fund.
What kind of program we can fund, yeah, to, to do that, to, to go from the five to three gallons or the one-point-sevens.
Or, or the one-point-os, you know, and, and some of these showerheads are amazing now. So that's a really good point. You know, we don't have the sewer water, but we could definitely use that to assist, especially at varied incomes. So there could be a program to actually implement water saving. And then we can get into the landscaping and the irrigation, too. Yeah. Anyway, all sorts of ways to save water, which saves energy.
Well, that, that was a question I didn't get to with Matt, is, you know, some of the people with the lawn irrigation do not have separate meters. And part of it is because they charge, they charge per meter in some cases. I'm not sure if Scioto, I think they do, do. So you put in the one meter and you figure, I gotta water your lawn a lot, but you're painting sewer all the time. And of course, that's coming up in our number, you know, and of course, we're, we're metering the flow. I think, I think it's.
Yeah, they're metering this sanitary, I don't know.
Sanitary, so sanitary flow, but.
And, and the other thing that we're going to work on, too, with the, and this is getting off topic, sorry, but is looking at the total energy cost of water. I mean, I know with Ann Arbor, when you look at the total energy cost, it's fifty percent of their total operations is water treatment.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's huge. And it'll be interesting to see how, what that is with Scioto, when we do that analysis, and how it coincides with flow and how you put, yeah, anyway, it's, that's an interesting thing. Okay. Any other comments before we?
And, and Jackie.
During our joint.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yes.
Jackie has her hand up, but I don't remember if that's from before or not.
Jackie? Jackie, did you?
She was in the water.
I'm sorry, that must be from, I'm sorry, that must be from before. I, I had not put my hand up recently. Thank you for checking that.
Sorry.
All right, great. Then if we don't have any other questions or anything, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn our, oh, Mr. Flintoff.
I'd just like to say, I, I'd like to say one, one last thing generally about Scioto Township's master planning process in the past. As a planner who has been working for almost thirty years in community planning, the Scioto Township master plan, in my opinion, has been a success story in communities, particularly the communities I work in. Part of, a big part of that has to do with the, the adherence and the fortitude of the township board and planning commissions of past and future, or present, I should say, of holding to the Township Sewer Service District. The Sewer Service District is one of our greatest planning tools because it concentrates development in a certain location and allows us to do the things that the residents want, and that's preserving open space and natural features and large lot home sites in other parts of the township. Scioto Township's planning commission and township board, over the twenty-five or twenty-six years I've worked here, have been, have always been very careful to follow their master plan. And that, that may sound like that's not a big deal, but in a lot of communities I work in, that is not the case. And many communities don't follow their master plans. And I just, I just think this is a, this current master plan is a continuation of, you know, very good work of planning commissions and township boards of previous, you know, of, of, really, the last twenty or thirty years. So I, I, I look at this as a, you know, I've, I've been, I've had the, the good fortune of being able to watch the development of Scioto Township for the last twenty-five to thirty years and, and see how the community has actually followed the plans that they put in place. And this is a continuation of that. And I've been very, you know, proud to work with you guys all these years. So I just wanted to mention that.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate that perspective because I haven't dug into this for twenty years, so it's great.
One, one quick comment before we adjourn, since this is sort of the last, you know, kind of public hearing on this document, the last sort of designed opportunity for public input. I mean, there probably will be more public input, but I served on the steering committee that was referenced, and we started back in two thousand and nineteen, working on this master plan. So this is really, this process has extended over, you know, two years, really. And, you know, the, the amount of public input, the, and the, you know, the quality of the public input over that time, I think, has really been noteworthy. And I don't want us to sort of forget all of that public input that occurred during COVID, you know, which was difficult to obtain. But people did participate. We even had a town, a town hall kind of meeting online. And we had, you know, that was sort of in the early days of Zoom, so we were all sort of struggling with it. But there's been a lot of engagement along the way, and I think that's helped to shape this plan and produce what I was just describing as yet another good Scioto Township master plan.
Yeah, and why don't we commit to getting, Doug, our comments, so you have them next Monday. And that way, we can keep this process rolling. And also to the public, there's always public comment at the planning commission meetings at the beginning for things that we don't have a public hearing for, so, yeah. And obviously, there's email, and then whether or not the board of trustees are going to go ahead and vote and, and be the final authorizing body, that there's public comment at, at your meetings as well. So it's, it's not the end, but it's, it's, it's a significant step. So thank you, everyone. And it's really nice to actually do a joint meeting.
It is, very nice. Thank you, Jen.
And so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I'll support that.
Supported by Supervisor Hathaway. Any discussion on the motion?
We have to do two roll calls.
Yes, we have to do two roll calls. Okay, Commissioner, Secretary Chang, will you roll call PC and then we'll roll call BOT?
Yes, Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Corteau.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay, BOT.
Clerk Flintoff, please call a roll for the BOT, and trustee Corteau can vote twice.
Hathaway.
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corteau.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-one.
Hold on. And then, just so everyone knows, the planning commission is, we're going to call to order our regular meeting of the planning commission for September twenty-seventh.
What do we have?
We just have meeting minutes and reports, that's it. So there's one, yeah, we have, so I'm going to call that to order. And we do need to do a roll call of those present. Commissioner Chang.
Thanks, Doug.